Call to order. You have a roll call.
Mayor present.
Glasser present.
Strobe present.
James present.
We have a quorum. We will now have the immigration president of the wing. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the common law that which is said is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you want to introduce Pat? I can't hear you. Introduce Pat.
Oh.
I'm sorry, what's his name?
James.
We have a new member on the historic board. I'd like to introduce Pat James. And we also have an alternate.
She's not here right now.
Libby Wright is her name is the alternate.
Okay, one minute. Welcome. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. So did everyone have a chance to read through the past agendas that were in here? We had three months worth, I think.
Yes.
To approve, May, June, and July. Were there any corrections or comments?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
I can move that we approve them.
Okay. All in favor? So that the minutes are approved for May, June, and July. Unfinished business, after the fact approval for 10 A P Street. Lori Peters.
Okay, good evening. Thank you all. Welcome, Ms. James. Yes, as you know, we had this before us in July. And you had some questions. This was where on May 23rd, 2023, our office received a complaint that the applicant replaced the previous front 18-light, one-panel wood door with a four-light, no-panel wood door on the commercial building. We have the pictures and as you can see, we did go out and take pictures on 9/7/2023, so you would have current pictures right before the agenda was sent out. And also to your left there is the door that was removed. So we'll see that. And also on the pictures, it will show you that the top of the entrance doorway was altered and the new doors have been are now were replaced with mirrored glass. All work was to cease and to submit the appropriate applications to the town for this work because they did not come forth for a certificate of appropriateness. Nor were there any other permits submitted to the town. And tonight, we do have someone here to represent for the questions that you have. Okay?
My name is Clive McElroth. I'm the owner of Tin Peach Street with Lori.
I'm sorry, can you say again?
My name's Clive McElroth. I'm the owner of Tin Peach Street with Lori Peters.
My biggest concern is that the doors are nowhere near historic looking or matching the design of either the facade or the previous stores. And our guidelines do say when you replace something, you're supposed to replace it with like from like. And I understand your concerns about safety of having the glass down too low. But none of the trim work, even the size and type of glass are at all similar to what was there before.
That's correct. We replaced it because we had problems with the previous door. We had dry rot in it and the door was 10 foot high and was actually breaking off the hinges. Plus, two patrons had already gone through the glass. They pushed, they'd broken those bottom pane windows. They'd actually broken the glass windows. Those glass windows were mirrored glass. And we put that mirrored glass on to stop people cutting themselves. So we had a safety problem with that door. Two safety problems. One is the glass didn't meet any code at all. It was just normal window pane glass. I think it was 4-millimeter window pane glass. When we got it, we put that mirrored tint on it to reinforce the glass. That is one thing. The second thing is the door was built too high. It was 10 foot high, probably to let a fire engine or a truck or something go in there with ladders, et cetera. But the hinges on the door with people moving in and out, the door had sagged and the dry rot had actually got in and damaged the hinges or destroyed the wood. So we had a problem with that. We then looked and what we did is we copied the window pane next to it. The glass is exactly the same glass, not exactly the same, but exactly the same size as the windows on the big slidey door. The up-and-door sliding door. We did reduce the height from 10 foot to eight foot because of security reasons. We didn't want the door, that's such a high door, moving and flexing and breaking again. So we changed that and we put the door in. But we tried to keep, we had to raise it up because the people had pushed their hands through the previous glass window when it was that low. And we copied the window adjacent to it. So try and keep it uniform from that point of view.
The windows don't look similar. The piece in between is much wider.
Yeah, that's from a structural point of view.
Were these doors custom made?
Yes.
Who made them?
Me.
They look homemade.
I deliberately wanted to keep them a rustic look on the doors. I didn't, because the previous doors that came out there were rustic looking. And we wanted to maintain that look. We didn't want them to look like a grand piano.
I'm just saying for the facade of this very historic building, the doors look homemade, like someone just slapped them off there. I'm not being, I don't mean anything against your skill. They just don't look.
We wanted that look. We didn't want furniture or cabinet look because the previous doors that came out there were also rustic look. So we deliberately didn't want them to look like grand piano furniture.
But that's the whole point of the historic is that when you replace something, you're supposed to replace it to look like it looked before, not change it.
Well, if you go back on the Historic Society, I'm quite happy with that. What doors do you want us to copy? Because we, they're photographs from
The ones that were there.
Which year? Because we've got doors that go back 100 years. The building's 100 years old. There are lots of different doors on that style.
That was kind of where I came down on this a week. We discussed this for a while last month, and I think it was nobody representing the avenue that year. I mean, the doors that were replaced, I agree, these look different. I think this is something of a practical solution to a very real problem was there. But how old were those doors? 20 years? Last time this building was renovated, those were not even remotely the original doors that had just been replaced.
Do we have any pictures of the original?
They are photographs of the original, well, not original doors. The building was built in 19, whatever it is, 1902 or 1904. There's been about four or five sets of doors. Those doors there were slidey roll-up doors at one stage.
From a historical perspective, you know, 100 years ago, this was known as Automobile Repair Alley, and there were a lot of auto repair shops that were right there. In fact, the Impact Fitness Exercise Facility that was there for a number of years, the only remnant of the history was there was a horseshoe on the wall which suggested from the structure that it was probably a horse and buggy repair place. But that has not had that real flavor. I'm just wondering what exactly was the history of the 3x6 window pane array? So, because I don't think that's been there that long either. So I don't know.
Excuse me. I believe the opening, though, was there.
So I have a picture from the 20s, and you can see just how different.
I can't tell. Was it glass?
It was the same opening. That's about all you can see.
Yeah, it was basically that opening that later throughout the decades been framed out.
Okay, so we don't get stuck on this and going back and forth. What I would suggest is if you're not in agreement of this store, because this would probably be the one that he would have proposed. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
If you would have come through the right process.
Sure, from a safety
You can, you can, as you would do with any other applicant, make suggestions for him to come back with another door proposal or one that would fix the look of the store as we would any other applicant. So we're not stuck going back and forth.
I would suggest that additional detailing needs to be put on to make it fit with the rest of the building, like maybe panels on the lower half of the door, much like you have under the windows in the front.
I know that
We have a problem on those. Those, the ones on the left-hand side, they're rotting as well, and they'll have to be changed.
I'm not talking about the windows. I'm talking about
I'm talking about the paneling at the bottom is rotten. The glass isn't gone rotten. It's the windows at the bottom that's gone rotten.
And that's fine. And when you replace them, you'll just replace them with something that looks similar.
Well, maybe it's not going to fit into, it might fit into the Historic Society, but it's from a practical point of view that we'll have to look at it and we'll make it look similar. That's fine. It's thin little paneled glass because those were slidey doors. They're not suitable for a restaurant.
Excuse me. This isn't a back and forth. They're giving you what would have been approved because we now have to treat it as this was an application.
Sure.
So they're giving you what they would like to see.
Sure.
And this is the Historic District Review Board, not the Historical Society. We don't want people getting confused on Facebook, so I have to correct that.
There are ways to make things with modern materials look historic but still be safe.
And I'm sorry, Ms. James was trying to say something earlier.
That's okay. I just wanted to suggest the possibility of the door opening, not so much the door, but above the door, you had, I don't know, something to make up the difference, the two feet, that you consider putting glass up there, just like is on the other side. So that would make it look more matching, I think. You wouldn't have to change the size because I understand the need for the newer door, but to put glass above it.
Sure, that's a good idea. We were proposing, we think of putting a sign up there, AJ's Bar and Grill sign, on top of that area there. But that's an application for the Town Council. But I understand that that's not a bad idea. We can put wood trimming around the sides if you want to do that, not the sides, the bottom portion, if you think it'll make it look old-fashioned.
Excuse me, did you say something about a sign?
Yep.
We have not had any, well, yes, it would be, but we haven't had any sign applications come in. That's another permit and another application to this board.
But our intention is, and I said that my intention is
But as I said, this is this
To put a sign up there.
This is this application for the door right now, okay?
So I understand the need for replacement, and I understand the concerns you had as far as safety. I'm just wondering if there was a way to, using the existing doors, just dress them up a little bit to look more appropriate for the period?
We can do that. If you want to put, we can copy the panels that are on the left-hand side, that braiding, we can put that onto the door. It's just case of nails and gluing it on.
Would it be possible for you to, like, just draw up an example and submit it to us so that we could approve it?
Sure. I mean, that's easy. We can, we can copy that pattern exactly the same onto the other door.
I would suggest that we not make, well, we not make a final decision at this point, that we wait and let them come back with the adjusted design?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make any difference for all intents and purposes because it's already done at this point.
But I mean, for a final approval.
Sure, but it's not like we can offer conditional approval because the work has been done, is not what I'm saying.
Well, you're, you're offering a new design. He's going to come back with you for a new design. Initially, that's what you're offering up. Ms. James suggested some things and Ms. Glazier.
And if he chooses not to do that, what would be the consequence?
I don't have a problem not doing that.
No, I guess it's asking a question.
I'm replying. I don't have a problem doing it. And if you want little trimming pieces to match the door on the left-hand side, that's easy to do.
I would propose that.
I think, think too, that when you talked about understanding the health, safety concerns, that you're not opposed to raising the window level a little higher.
Right, having the bottom have solid
So you've got that guidance, you know, accompanying your work.
And we've put safety glass in there. It's not mirrored glass, it's safety glass, double-layered safety glass. It meets code.
Now, if the doors were safe, if people broke them, what about the windows on the side?
They're higher than where people go in and out. First off, people don't go in and out of that side. So what happens is on that door, people were pushing the door and putting their hands on the glass and pushing right through it. And that was the urgency to actually change it.
Wouldn't someone like to make a suggestion motion?
Are you, are you, are you clear about what you're being asked to do?
Sure.
Okay, then I would, I would move that we defer this until we get the kind of information back that the chair had requested. If that's
I appreciate that.
To be a motion, maybe Tracy could fill in, fill in some of the details of what that was.
So do you want me to do a design, submit a design proposal, and then wait until we get approval to it before we actually do it?
Better than actually altering the door and then not having us approve it.
If I may, it may be useful if we ask him to submit the drawing in the next week?
Yes.
If you can't get a drawing into the office in the next 10 days, eight, seven days to 10 days, and then now we can distribute to the board. And if they don't have any objections to what you've submitted, then we can go ahead and move that forward. If they do, we'll notify you and we'll put this back on for the October calendar. But if we can get the drawing in and it is acceptable to the board, then we will notify you, Clive, and you can move forward with getting that done.
I appreciate that. If I take blue tape and I actually do the layout on the existing door and take a photo off of that, would that be acceptable?
Sure. As long as we can see what the changes are.
It's just, I'm going to put trimming around the panels exactly on the, to copy the other size.
I agree. I think that's a good idea, Katie. If you would just get something back to us next week and then we can discuss it and approve it. And if everything is okay, then you're good to go.
And that's what you intend in your motion, correct?
Yes.
Took the words out, you know. So we need both.
We need a second. I need a second on that.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Who's the other committee member?
She raised her hand.
Okay, thanks very much.
No minor renovations, no new construction, no martial.
Nope, we're, we're back at, this is a modification to an approved certificate of appropriateness from, let's see, June 8, 2021, for 301 Mason Avenue, which we all know as Lemon Tree. And I have, I tried to list everything out. And then I put the materials list of what materials I did have. I put photos of existing, which were taken, I'm sorry, I did not put that date and I should have. Oh, no, the dates are on the photos themselves, which were taken right before the agenda was sent out, which are 9/11, and then the proposed front that was submitted by the applicant. And then if you will notice in the staff analysis, it does say that the proposed modifications to the commercial building are in accordance with zoning. The applicant will need to complete an application for a sign permit for all proposed signage, except for the 911 addresses for the second-story apartments before any signage can be approved by zoning, as the dimensions and how the signage will be affixed to the commercial building are unknown. And then you'll, if you go down, you'll see Historic District Overlay Design Guidelines and Staff Recommendation, which it says here, staff is recommending that due to the signed dimensions, materials, and how the signage will be affixed to the commercial being, building being unavailable, that they cannot be approved until that information is unknown. But for all other modifications, they can be reviewed. Okay? And I do believe the applicant and other representatives are here.
Hello again. So she went through everything, and I think it's accurately represented that what our intentions are. So I know in the heading here it says sign application still needed, but we've, we're going under the premise that you have to approve what we've put as a rendering prior to us applying for the application.
Separate.
Okay, so we'll, but essentially, we don't plan on differing from what you see here. To answer the question about how the lights will be attached, so it would be our desire to penetrate the walls and then anchor these lights into the walls with a cement anchoring system, something that On, on all the, all the pendant lights that you have there. So if you look at the renderings, it shows three lights on Strawberry Street and then two lanterns above on the balcony at Mason Avenue. So if you look at the photograph that was taken on page 2 of 4, I believe is what she has. So that's the existing structural steel that's being fabricated now. So the balcony will look as close to what you see in the rendering below. The detail of the railing is very difficult to see here, but it's going to have a, kind of a diamond shape with some circular
So the railing in this picture is the railing you're putting on?
Correct. It's, it's just hard for you to see the details. So that's why I wanted to show you that. And then essentially, we've already started the, the painting. If you go down there and you'll see that the stars are now black and that we've painted all of the stucco and all of the masonry that we could reach with the
I just wanted All of the, all of the balcony work, the rails, that's already been approved, right? Nothing new?
Well, the, not the signage for that and then
Not the signage, no.
Correct. So, but, but what I'm, what I'm here for is, what I understood was that we were applying for the railings. Maybe I'm incorrect.
We had a different railing in the previous store.
Well, the railing that was shown in the second rendering was a, the other gentleman said it was a, what do you call it, Louisiana style?
Right.
But that was not, this is intended, this is what was originally submitted. And so we never really intended to deviate that way. It was just something that happened because, I mean, literally, we had no time for the architect and there was a disconnect on how that rendering was created. So this is, this is more accurately representing what we submitted to the, for the building permit.
Real quick on the sign. You would approve the sign that would be affixed to the building. You cannot tonight because you don't know how it would be affixed. And they don't have their other paperwork in for us. And they do need that in.
Well, so that
So this is, this will be the railing?
Correct. And then the, the sign, as you see there, that's the intent. So had I known that we were supposed to do the application for the sign first before approval, then it would have been, so, but nothing's going to deviate there. That's what we would like to do is the Lemon Tree logo in a gold lettering raised, three-dimensional, with the two stars in gold as well, with the black background and gold trim. And that's
The signs just, they have very specific numbers of square inches that you can
Yeah, and the zoning measure is pretty straight.
Right, so that's, that's why it's separate.
So, so all we can do tonight is the lighting, the railing, the decking material, correct? Sign is completely irrelevant to tonight's discussion.
And the street light that you have there, that's just a paper that has, you guys
The street light.
Oh, yeah, that's
That, that belongs to the town.
I had a question on the side of the building. I actually went over there and looked at it.
Yes.
Are you going to have to lower that awning on the door in order to fit the bottom of the balcony here?
Here we go.
Well, the
It's so close.
Well, we didn't put the detail there because we were concerned that we weren't going to be allowed to put the awning back. So we left the awning in place and then we, there is no room to put the detail there. So the
So maybe we go take the awning off?
Well, then the, we want to be able to have that awning because that's going to be the entry into the apartment. So, how do I put this? What we were concerned with is that if we take the awning off, that we wouldn't be allowed to put it back on. And then because of the details that were in here, so we're just being very cautious because of what's happened to this point.
No, my question was, I mean, yeah, you'll, you can take the awning off if you're going to put it back on. Will it fit once you
Uh, that is not going to fit that detail. You can see, you can see in the photograph that was taken that the awning does get in the way of what was
So you'll have to put a smaller awning.
Actually, that is the original awning.
That's the original awning, yes.
The historic original awning.
Yes. So that, that was why we didn't remove it because it did have a historical representation. Yes.
Won't fit.
Correct. That's why, if you look carefully, there is no detail like the other ones that are there now. If you look at the actual proposed photograph, I didn't take the awning down simply because I was under the impression that was part of the historical item. That's on the rendering. This is the actual photograph.
So if you're looking at this photograph, that's actual, that's
Right, so it won't look like that.
Unless, you know, we were to redo
This is what confused me. You have this.
Yeah, that's the architect's rendering of it, but that's actual.
So it's not the beach?
No, we're not changing that awning. That's
All right. Well, you have a railing there?
Yes, of course.
So Nick, the question really is, can you still fit the Juliet balcony above that corner?
Okay, so that's kind of, that, that's what is, those are facades. Those are essentially not structural and they will not be protruding out. The balcony railing stops on the interior of the wall. Those doors are recessed in and we are on top of structural concrete. So the only way I can describe it to you is if you open the door, you can step out onto a, but you cannot step out past the front of the wall. That's, that's kind of not how that's going to look. It's going to be just a straight railing that's attached
And I understand that. I just want to know what it's going to look like when it's done.
Yes. So with the, with the historical awning there, there was not an application done to that. So we chose to be cautious and leave it in place as opposed to taking it off and then being told we couldn't put it back on. Because then, now if you live in the building, in the new apartments above, you're going to basically get wet or whatever the weather you're going to basically get wet or whatever the weather conditions are without that. That, that is protecting, you know, that entrance.
So what do you want to do?
Uh, well, that's something we, we talked about with Clelia and so...
Because that, that is part of this whole final.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, so if you don't mind, I'll just ask a little. So what they're saying to me is, you can't take that off.
Okay. So we did have a pre-application with them and let's see. You're getting stuck on the awning. The awnings, I do believe, that were approved previously, this, they'll find a way to make it all work, but she wants the, sorry, when I say she, sorry about that.
That's...
Mrs. Shepherd is clearly, she's keeping this awning. She, you know, she, she came forward for, yes, it does. And actually, if you, if you remember correctly, when she, you know, when she first came to us, it had some signage on it. I don't know if she's still going to do that or not. But yes, and she's going to keep that. And then I guess you all will work around it to fit the Juliette-style balcony.
Well, the balcony...
On it. But what he's saying is the balcony is not really a balcony. It's, it's just a fence in front of a...
Correct. But there is, there is a, about a 12-inch section that you can actually step on.
Yeah, it, it's really not meant for chairs or anything.
No, I get that. I'm just wondering if you'll be able to do that with the awning where it is.
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
The only thing it'll be lacking is that little white facade sticker.
Just cover it anyway once it's put on.
Yes, that's correct. So, yes, that's, that's where we, we stand at this point.
Anyone else?
So have you seen the detail of the awning before, I mean, not the awning, I'm sorry, the rail? The, you said it was like New Orleans?
Now, this is not the original one.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That was a...
The original one had like a curve and very...
Well, it was a mistaken one. When we, when we were, had to stop work, we had the architect generate a rendering and he generated it with, I guess, the railings that happened to be on the screen at the time. And they came out with that New Orleans style, which was never intended. So what's, what's on the, this was what was originally intended and that's where we are. And the other difference is that there's no longer going to be any railings on the bottom, on the street level. So the only, only railings we'll be installing will be on the second floor.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I guess my only other question, I have no issues with the materials, with the railings. If you could just tell us a little bit more about the lights.
Well, the, the plan is to, to use a lantern-style light that you see here, which would match what's proposed for the front on top of the balconies in Mason. So we, we also heard that the concerns that the town has with the potential for, what do you call it, light pollution heading up. So it's going to be a lantern style, not a streetlight brightness. It's going to be something that's just very aesthetic and will give us some light and make it very pleasant to walk down that side of the street. As of right now, it's dark.
And the lights on the balcony are controlled by the owners of those apartments, correct?
That's correct. The lights on the side of Strawberry Street will be controlled by the, the store or the owners. The other thing that is, needs to be pointed out is the tree that's there in the front, in the front planting bed, it's shown kind of invisible there. So you will not see that lantern from the, across the street. It's, it's not going to be visible other than however much we have to trim the tree back when we do the final installation of the balcony. So I take it we need to get a signed application in right away. So...
But we can, we can approve the design up to this point?
So if we, if we look at it, I think your concerns are how we're going to attach it to the balcony?
Not designed.
Not designed? How do we?
No, no. Just approve the modifications.
Right. That's what I'm saying. What, what has...
All the modifications.
Yes. And, and not talk about the sign.
That's correct. You can approve items, in the staff report, you can approve items one, four, and five.
Okay.
What they're seeking to modify. We cannot act on the signage because we don't have the application that gives the dimensional information to go through zoning review.
Okay.
That has not occurred yet.
So we'll make that happen. Does that have to come in front of the Historic Review Board again?
That's the lantern.
Yes, they will have to see it again once we've been able to achieve those...
You can see it right there now.
I mean, the thing with the sign is if it meets all the criteria for the zoning and all that, it's just a...
A formality?
Formality.
Okay. And then however we're going to attach it to the front is, is also what you're concerned with.
It looks, I thought it was just paper down here.
No, we're talking about the one on the side.
On the side.
That's a difference. So the one that, that's a profile, as you look at Strawberry in front of Mason, it's a profile sign. It's hanging. So we need to know how it's going to be affixed to the building.
Okay.
And the decking? You're changing the decking?
Uh, no, no. So the reason why the decking information was on there, this is originally intended. It's a concrete floor with a TPO membrane, which is a rubber membrane roof on top of that. And then we put sleepers, wooden sleepers down and then Trex material on top of that. So it's going to be a synthetic wood on the top where you walk and then the, the concrete underneath it. So there will be a drainage system so that the water just doesn't sheet drain into the people coming into the store.
So it'll be tiny group and the grain will be off the sides?
It's going to be like your deck. There's going to be gapping in between the boards. Water will go down into the membrane roof. It'll flow forward into a channel and the channel will redirect it into the storm gutter that's there existing. So. We've already cleaned out all those drains, by the way, so the city's going to, I mean, the town is going to like that. The water drains that were there previously were all clogged and Clelia took care of all that.
Could it be worded in a way so that if the proposed signage does meet the sign ordinance, then it...
You don't know anything about it.
I appreciate the team. Thank you.
But we could make a motion to approve these modifications.
Yes, we'd like you to act on that.
Go for it.
I would like to make a motion to approve the application as listed with the exception of the front signage and the, I guess, the sign on the side, on the Strawberry Street side and how it will be affixed to the building.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Now we get to, just, do we have to do another application?
Um, it's a signed application.
Signed application, but not another historical.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Trace.
So, no additions, no additions, no, no, no. Other business?
What can it prove?
Before you and my, my report to you, we have had a few items come forward for minor exemptions approved by your zoning administrator as authorized through the guidelines. So we have those listed out for you. We are indicating under what sections they are getting approved. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me. Otherwise, I will keep moving on. At last month's meeting, there had been a request to get some further information on where we are at 1 Fig Street. So I wanted to give you at least, not necessarily a status report, but at least to give you a cataloging of your approvals to date so you understand the timeframes involved at this point in time. They were at the Kellogg Building. They got their first certificate of approval on May 17th, 2022. That was dealing with what we called Phase One, which was for the remediation of the lead and asbestos in the building and the removal of the windows, doors, and to correct a bulge in the rear brick wall to help shore up the building. They then came back before you on August 16th of 2022 for what was called Phase Two, which was the full renovation plan of the exterior of the building. As well, they talked to us about what would be their interior renovation of the space as a full-service commercial restaurant and bar. Even though the interior is not part of your review or, or approval, that was just necessary information to understand all the exterior changes that were going to be occurring. That was approved. It was delayed in implementation because at that point, we were strongly urging them to, if they could, acquire an adjacent lot, adjacent to this building, to deal with some of the, the layout issues that would come with a commercial restaurant and some of the parking requirements if they were going to be seeking some residential dwelling space on the second story, which was their intended plan. They did finally reach agreement and purchase that adjacent lot. That didn't occur until almost December of 2022. So it delayed some of those plans being able to move forward until that acquisition had happened. They then came through the town for a conditional use permit for a total of four residential units on the second floor, which finally was approved by Town Council on April of 2023. After that, they came back to this board again to request another certificate of appropriateness to reflect that they had slightly changed the plans based upon this property being acquired next door, which allowed them to slightly expand the building and, and expand their operations considerations for the restaurant. And you did review that and approve it on April 16th, 2023. So that really is now the additional clock that we're running from and, and moving forward. So yes, as part of that meeting, we urged them to come forward and start applying for building permits, get information into us because that will, will keep the certificate of appropriateness active and ongoing if we, as we start to see progress on it. That has not occurred yet. So we wanted to make you aware of that. I met with them as of a week ago. They told me that they had now secured a contractor. I have not yet seen that contract or any evidence to that, that effect, but they're telling me they have a contractor in, on hand for the property now. And they would be forthcoming and get, and coming in to get the roofing permit as well as an additional permit for some of the exterior doors and window installation. I will say that we don't have final building plans into the building officially yet for his review. So I just want to make you aware, when that comes, he still will have a, a week or, or longer to do that full review under his standard. So I just wanted to give you that update. We are very concerned with the lack of progress at this point. This permit is, is coming to its expiration date and there just not has been enough progress to, to say that we would extend it naturally or that we would actually approve a modification to extend the life of that permit. So I just wanted to keep you apprised of this. We will continue to be in conversations with the property owner to try and move this forward, but we may be back to you in October to figure out next steps. April 16th, since that was your last approval. And I do think there has been progress along the way. They were acquiring property. They obtained additional permits from the, from the town relative to a conditional use permit. Those are all material progressions of, of moving this project forward. So I consider all your prior approvals still moving forward. The latest one was the April 16th, 2023. That started the new clock of six months from that, that approval date.
So they told you they have a new contractor, but you didn't, you weren't able to get any, like, is he going to come? Is it, is he...
I, I know exactly who it is. I'm, I am pleased with their selection. I did ask to see a copy. Again, they can blackout all the, the cost of what they've secured for the services, but I've just asked to see it with the scope of work to make sure we know that they've been retained. That has not been provided to me yet. But yes, it is somebody who has done business in, in the Historic District, has worked in commercial projects as well, who's a reputable contractor. So I'm pleased to, to know that they've been affiliated with this one. That's who, that's who they've selected. So that was a good step forward, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And his reason for not having done anything yet is that they've just been too busy?
As, as you were aware, they have, they parted ways with their original contractor. And so there were some issues, and there may still be issues. Again, that's really not our concerns, as I've expressed to the property owners. Whatever happened with their original contractor and, and parting the ways and addressing those legal issues are not reasons that we can, can say are valid for why this project hasn't moved forward. That's not our concern. It's not our issue. Our issue is we've approved and we need you to move forward.
And do they have a...
Yes. At this point, again, they, they really felt they would be coming in here in the next two weeks to apply and, and obtain the necessary permits to get started on the roofing work. So again, as, as I said, I met with them just about a week ago. So maybe they got another four days to, to still get in to see me and get their permits moving forward.
And how long did we wait this about?
I told them four days. So I, I gave them two weeks. And so I'm trying to see if they will come in, in the expiration of those two weeks. But ultimately, they have until October 16th, which is six months from the date of your last approval. So we just wanted to give you the status report. Okay? No, they did not post a bond. There's no requirement under our current ordinance for a bond. We talked about that and, and I can't say that this board was 100% convinced that was the, the direction we should be going in. And again, we, we are a little on uncertain ground whether we have the legal authority to require a bond under the Historic District Overlay Ordinance. So, okay? And while I'm up here, my next item, your calendar. Because it's, it's getting to that time that we need to start advertising and making the public aware of your next calendar for 2024 so that we can give everybody due diligence and notice as to when applications will be due in for your first coming meetings in the new year. So we have given you the calendars. I think we have flagged and, and addressed any of, any conflicts along the way, but if we haven't, let us know. And also, this will help us to confirm you guys are still good with a 5 o'clock start time for all your meetings, the third Tuesday of the month.
Are we all in agreement? If that is acceptable or achievable? I mean, I don't, do you want to bring that up in the discussion?
It's worth talking about right now because we want to post this.
For me, based on my work schedule and my kids' schedule, pretty foreseeable future until I would say the spring, it should be no problem.
I have no problem anytime. I'm never in a hurry.
It's, it's, I have to leave 10 minutes early to get here in time. My workday ends at 5:00, so I can do it. It's just...
Yeah, well, and previous people, that was an issue, but...
And it's up to this board to when you want to start. Again, I, I don't think I, I told that to, to Pat during her orientation, but previously, I think until, what, last year, we started at 6:00 PM. And so we only just recently moved us to, to start at 5:00 PM.
Well, when I first started, it was 6:00 and then another board had made it. Gosh, we started way earlier and then this board said 5:00.
I just thought it was a little confusing because other boards meet at different times.
Well, Planning Commission starts at 6:00 PM. Town Council starts at 6:30 PM. Wetlands Board starts at 5:30. Harbor now is meeting at 5:30. I had...
BZA is 10:00 AM.
So you take your pick.
Yeah.
It could be anywhere. So it's what you wish to have and what may work best for the people who come before you.
Well, and the other concern is, you know, people that have conflicts. Even the applicants may not, you know, if they have full-time jobs.
That doesn't, actually, the contractors that come, say the...
Oh, for them, no, that doesn't matter. Like I said, anytime is fine for me. So shall we just leave it at 5:00 for now and think about it in the spring?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say that's, leave it at 5:00. If there's any problem, we'll deal with it then. I'm sorry, I guess.
So are you good with us keeping the meeting at 5:00?
I made this one. So yes, my goal is just a one, you know, it's only one day a month.
Okay. Okay. So I do need a motion for you to accept the calendar so we can get it published and, and set this, just again, so we're all aware, it's not just setting your meeting dates. We're also putting in the deadline to submit applications to get on each of your meeting dates. So again, just to remind everybody, we do it just over a month prior is when you have to get your applications in to get for, into that subsequent month's meeting. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I make the motion that we accept the count number.
Thank you. Excellent.
Anything else?
That's all I have. Oh. And Libby Wright is here, who is our alternate member. So we apologize to be late.
It's okay.
This is, this is the sitting board. So I don't know if you know, everyone, Kathy Blaser is our chairman. Hurt Tom is, is our vice chairman. He is not here this evening. Mari, Mari Mayer, Michael Strobe, and Pat James, of course, is our newest member.
So...
Nothing else?
We have nothing else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
No.
Okay.